Yeah. That's true, Augur.
Yeah, we're recording, so we're ready to go whenever you all are.
Let's go ahead and get started. Okay, welcome everybody for a work session actually for what, August, March twenty-sixth?
I'll jump ahead of that.
Can I get a roll call?
Counselperson Tony Abbott is absent. Counselperson Aaron Cook.
Here.
Counselperson Mel Davis here but not present. Counselperson Randy Abner.
Here.
Counselperson Paul Seymour Jr.
Here.
City Attorney Dell Weldon.
Here.
And Mayor Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, I think it's one topic on the, sort of on the agenda was, need to talk about the, we'll call it the Davis properties. Uh, and what, what you guys want to do with that, short-term versus long-term or, uh, right now, um, it's, it's back in our possession. Sort of a next step, we need, we need to discuss next steps.
I, I, hey, I asked for a move, so I'll start it off anyhow. I just, it, it's my belief that I think the property's good property. And I, I want to develop these properties and that property is developed. I think people are doing a good job up there, but I don't think I want to own them. And the reason why is, is because, um, tax base, TIF, whatever, whatever we want to do in that particular area. Um, I think, you know, cities like Greendale have been using their TIF and, and different things, but I, the way I would like to pursue either exploring the possibility of getting rid of it is I'd like to pick a few of our local realtors and put it in their hands, because it's my belief that once a realtor gets this property, it goes into what would be a multi-listing. So I don't think that we're really singling out, um, if we want, we put a proposal together to where we invite our local realtors and see who might be interested. We, we've got what, uh, three buildings. We've, we've got the, uh, well, the one that's all the way in the back by the parking garage is at a building two.
There's two up on high. You've got the, the corner up here.
Right now, I believe that we've got renters in them, things are prospering, people are working hard. And I just don't know that they're ever going to be any more sellable than they are right now with what we got going on at the park.
Well, can we, can we take another step into that too, though, make sure everything is the way we would want it before we sell it? And I know you guys has been going through and making sure everything's safe and fixed and stuff like that in the buildings.
I think that, that everything should be fixed before we, we intend to sell it, but, uh, I'm just going to throw this out there. Obviously, um, those, those properties are valuable properties to us. They want to wait until I have the park opens to sell them, because I think it might be worth, as far as the appraisal on them.
Yeah.
I was going to mention trying to get appraisal on them, yeah.
Would, would you rather wait until we get some, the, the items fixed and then, uh, at, once somebody sees the par, I mean, you have the park done, open, I mean, that'd be what may.
Well, it's not that far off, but what, the one thing I'd like to do though is what are, what are we going to fix? I'd like to know that. I'd like to have that conversation. I, uh, I, I don't think, uh, I just, you know, there's some things you, you know, I've noticed, there was a Friday night that we had our maintenance crew down there and they were cleaning the sewer out for a pizza joint. A pizza joint can clean their own sewer out. They're the ones that caused it. They're the ones that put the greasy in the line. And part of the problem is, is the, you know, the old buildings, they, they aren't built for that, that modern way of throwing grease in their sewer and it gets to the plant and there ain't no fix for it.
They've got a, they've got a, a grease oil sep, grease oil water separator.
Well, they're not maintaining it. And, and I don't personally think it's our job to maintain it. They're just up there cooking, 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 and then, hey, you guys need to come down here and fix the sewer. No, there's certain things that a lease or should be having to do in that building. And I like the guy. He's probably one of the best things that's came to the town, period. I mean, he's a worker, he's got a nice place going down there, and I think it's helping what we got going on and it's helping what we got going on in the park. So I don't want to cause him no problems, but I bet you he's always taken care of it before. I don't want a baby.
But you know, what I, what I kind of picture, you talking about working on things, is like the, the, this back stairs, the wooden stairs coming off, could we upgrade things like that for evacuations and stuff like that? Uh, like, is a, it's a.
In the back there, framing.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about?
Uh, yeah, it needs, it, it, the minimum needs to have a, a fire escape because the, uh, that back patio is not, the steps from that is not the necess, according to code, is not the necessary piece of it, but a fire escape is.
Right, and you need some steel stairs. Upgrade that.
Well, that's, if, if we could get a list together of things that what you guys might want to do on these buildings, so we could talk about it.
And then if you want to do.
How long have we had these buildings?
We do the burnout lot over there, you got air.
Not that long, actually. January.
January, technically. We got them back in January.
Seems like forever ago.
Well, what about, what about this, um, right now, we, um, well, we had had that receiver doing all the collecting and sealing all the barrels for whatever needs to be done over there. Can either continue to do that until we decide to sell it. Or, I mean, we could, we could try to bring it in-house, but it, it would be a pretty big undertaking. Uh, just because of, if you get a call on a Saturday night, I'm sort of with you there, but.
Al, how's, how's the, the guy working with you guys on, on your building? Is he working okay? He's not?
He's zero.
Okay, okay.
Okay, though, that's, that can answer that question.
Well. And, and I, I would say that that's my fault. I think that because of the transition, you know, we always viewed him to be temporary and Al, he, Al, he just sent us today a list of some repairs to be made at your place and we're going to make sure they're done. Yeah, and I think he was kind of in limbo, so again, that's my fault. If we keep him on, and I, I agree with Mayor and Paul that that's a good idea because he's more equipped, but only under the condition that he is very responsive. Um, you know, we're super lucky to have these tremendous businesses in these properties and we, that's got to be our top priority. So I would say, the way I look at it is we've got repairs and then we've got, you know, modifications. So the repairs are, you know, fix everything that Al needs fixed, uh, you know, Greg Davis's old apartment needs HVAC. We can get a list of that and bring it to you, but then we can also get a list and bring to you of potential things, like Mayor said, fire escape, moving, uh, the HVAC units that are out in the parking lot. And then as a team, figure out what we need to do. Then when we list these properties, they're going to be worth a lot more than they are right now, because they are wonderful properties. If you could, just the.
Throw my two cents in, in here what Paul says.
Well, and that, that might not, that might be an option, but with, with us owning the properties, it may not be because we got to go through the process. But if there's a way we could do that, I would much rather do that, but we're not going to hold the mortgage. That's for sure. We're done with that stuff.
Well, and I, I agree with that, but like, I think Aaron just brought it up about appraisals. That's the first step.
Right.
I guess, and then, and then I also agree that we've got a park going in and once that park's done and we see the, the vibrancy, our appraisals might be better. Um, and then we have to go through, you know.
Whatever pro.
Whatever process we need to do.
I'd much rather do that.
I, I just know, Al, from, from my point of view, and, and I witnessed it years ago, you know, on a, on a Saturday, you know, we'll get a call, something's wrong, well, that's four hours for us. We, we bring them in, we do the show-up time, and it used to be, hey, maybe it'd be, might be little and somebody might come back Monday to fix it. We got enough things to do without having the apartments and things that we're going to take care of. I mean, we're into our parks, we're into our buildings and maintenance. I don't want to make them apartment fix.
And this is a temporary thing anyways.
That's, that's all I'm saying. I just, I just would like to get this conversation going and thinking about it. And the ideas that's been presented, we're not that far off. That park's going to be open.
Can we, uh, can we agree then, maybe, uh, we'll, we'll get the list together of what needs to be fixed now? Uh, things that we think should be fixed before we put them on the market? And then bring it back and get approved, and then we can fix it. Uh, we got like twenty-two thousand dollars in the escrow account, I think, uh, of stuff that's been collected up there. Um, and then move forward? Is that, is that a doable thing, was bringing the list back?
Bring the list. We got a, we got a target date of an area, you know, what's the park? We're in June. So we're looking, we, we might, once we get all this stuff rolling, we might be looking at what, July, August, to try to, to just see how it goes. But I, I just want to make sure that, I, I want to know if we're committed to owning them and keeping them or if we want to pass them on, or I hope that we could sit back and be a good owner. Because it takes a special person to own one of these buildings. I mean, I want them taken care of. Because we're, we're putting a lot of money and when I ride around, I look at, you know, we got two little gems there right beside, uh, Tom's building. They're, they're beautiful little buildings, but we can't get the people to fix, you know, they put a tarp on a roof to fix it. We, we've put too, way too much money now in this end of town. We need, really need to pick, pick that up a little bit.
Yeah, Tom.
Pat and the board at Main Street has approached.
Unburied.
The, the radio station owner, um, the Harry J next, next to us with the tarp on the, uh, the grants they will get from, um, they indicate, I'm not going to say they're going to do it, but they indicate that, um, the radio station will be painted, that yellow building on the end. That Harry J is going to fix.
Are these grants, participating grants, or are they, they're, okay. So they got to put money in? Okay.
Does Carl know about those? Have you talked to Carl about those? May I ask more? Okay.
There's one other thing I'd like Main Street to consider. It's, it's a great program and it's, it's almost perfect. I would like them to consider not handing the money out until Carl signs off on them and they're. Same way we do the housing, it's a, uh, certificate of occupancy type thing. That, I just feel like that that's, that's something that we've got over the, I, I think it would be a good idea to do that.
Don't we do that now, though? We don't give them. Yeah.
Well, we, we've got one instance that.
Didn't go that way.
Well, the, the people that are thinking it's done, I don't think they quite understand construction enough to know, realize that it's done. We've got one porch that still doesn't have railing on it.
Okay.
And that's my only instance. That's why I want Carl to just walk in there and say, hey, everything's safe, it's done. That's that.
And you're going to take care of stuff for Al? Make sure that we get that taken care of?
Yeah, and, and what I, what I would say to Al and all our downtown business owners that'd be affected by this, you, you guys come first, you've always come first. I apologize for any hiccups. Uh, I think that's my fault, just because I always told Jamie that he's temporary, he needs to do, um, kind of a, as little interference. So what I would pledge, and Doug and I both met with Jamie today, he's willing to do this. We're going to let him know how attentive he needs to be, but I will serve as a backup. And so, Al, you can call me if you're not getting the answers that you get from Jamie, and I'd encourage you to do that. Um, we've also always pledged all along to, um, enter into lease agreements that are beneficial to you and the other business owners. So regardless of who ends up purchasing these properties, uh, your businesses will be our number one concern in protecting the long-term health of your businesses, so. Which one, the big one or? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I think we wa, we want to do the immediate necessary repairs and then as a phase two, any ideas like that, I would say, you know, we'll entertain those as a group. And then if there's something that we would feel, uh, i- is a useful modification to make to the building, then we can move forward with that and we can take it in front of Historic or BZA or whoever needs to see that.
Well, then, uh, if we can, uh, anybody got anything else?
Just that, if people are interested in renting apartments, should they still contact you or?
They should contact Jamie Collier.
Okay, I can get your, I can get his number from you then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, and we, and he's the one who sent us, uh, your list, so we'll just, we'll circle back with him right away after this meeting.
If he, if he don't take care of it, I'll, they'll.
Yeah, I'll walk down there with you after the meeting, if that's okay. Thank you.
Um, so what I'd like to do then is, is if the, the, we've got a short-term plan, right? Or a long-term plan, which is to get them listed and sold at some point. Uh, let's, I, I'd like to put some dates to that, so we can at least, uh, maybe in the month, during June, we can start soliciting, uh, commercial real estate people. Uh, and, and try to come up with a, and get our appraisals. And then, and, you know, sometime, and, you know, and then we list it, and July, August is maybe a sell period, hopefully. Does that sound?
Market will tell us that, right?
Yes, market will tell us that.
Somebody's interested, we'll, a, and I also, guys, I mean, me personally, I can't stress enough that I'm not in this as a fire sale. I want to find a good owner for the building, because it takes special people.
A good suitable person.
So I, I'm not in, I don't want to make you guys think that I'm in a hurry here.
I don't think we need to be.
Okay, that's it, because I just want the, the right owner.
Uh-oh.
Raise your hand.
You know, I think, at the end, at the end of the day. But I think, actual perspective, you know, we're, you know, we don't want to just think, we need to be really careful about how private sector, question that's very. Improvements made in, that's all set and done, these things. How you and presence to the city, you're a good trend. We'll have to do that.
Well, we've, we've, we've sort of decided we would do that. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, number one, you got to, you got to keep the buildings up. Number two, there's probably improvements that need to be made before we put it on the market. Just like you would with your house, right? They're different, we would with our house. Yeah.
I just, I mean, I, I think. Those load go fast.
Oh, we're not.
Got one question that, that we don't need an answer to, but if we're going to sell these buildings, we need to be talking about providing protection to our commercial tenants. Um, and we're talking about signing new leases, because the old leases are with Davis Holding Companies and we want to have a uniform commercial lease with all our commercial tenants, which I am suggesting will include a first right of refusal, um, perhaps for purchase. If you get an offer, sometimes the, the first right of refusal allows the existing tenant to buy the building at whatever price is offered to the city. That's something to consider, whether you would want that in those leases. And secondly, any purchaser of the building is bound by the existing leases to the building. So you could also provide a lease that provides for automatic renewal for your commercial tenants for a period of time or indefinitely. In other words, they get to stay there as long as the business is profitable. So those are two things to think about, um, at the next meeting, what protections you guys want to see us provide for your, your commercial tenants, um, going forward.
All right, and that's a good point. I mean, I, every weekend, I'm up and down these streets and I look at it and sometimes I say, wow, what's going on downtown? We got a lot of people down here. I don't want to end that by no way. I'm, I know how many hours you put in. You've, you've put in those hours now for a year, not just one year. You've been down here fighting it for a long time. I don't want to do anything to hurt or hinder anything like that.
Well, I'll, I'll bring some suggestions then to provide as much protection as possible to the commercial tenants. But realizing the more protection you provide to the commercial tenants, that affects your ultimate sale price. So you've got to, you've got to balance those two things. If you have a fifth, twenty-year lease with your commercial tenants at a certain reasonable rent, you're going to have less interest potentially from a buyer who wants to do something else with the building. So those are questions for you guys to think through. What's more important, highest possible sale price or protection for your commercial tenants, or something in the middle?
Well, I, I. That's for discussion.
I, I just throwing that out there for people to think about. I, I, because it's some, decisions that we do have to make.
It's not always about price.
I said one last thing. Doug, I, I fully understand, but I'll tell you. In, in our antique mall, down on two oh one also. One's pieces, a big reason. Businesses, oh, I can't wait till we have these. We're fairgrounds in Burlington, it brings me, it's a neck up for an antique. Now we're a start online. The break come down here, not because of Hollywood, okay? Because of what we've done to these streets with the lights, the music, entertainment value, the new park. It's just going to keep getting bigger and bigger. And the big and, biggest reason all this has happened is because of that event center. Bringing the town, the whole west side, all in northern Kentucky, everybody up in north of Indiana, or Indiana, is finding out about this town. Perfect example was Thursday, I have three beautiful tables, Earlwood, caramelized, it's like the lights. Gorgeous, perfect for a low camp. They forgot the burger bar. Hundred dollars for all three. So they wanted, come on, Tim.
Wow.
Come on, Tim. We got people from all over this country to come here because of the creation museum, the art. Break, break, everybody's coming down. Town is big time. Comes out of reasons why. You've got two big retail businesses down here, are another big part of that. I, I love to play golf. I don't play golf anymore. Because of that woman. But I mean, hey, it's, it's got to be done, so.
Awesome.
Great friends down here and I don't want to do that.
I think we all appreciate that too, you being down there with that, that business down there.
That's not the purpose of me saying this. I just want, you know, I'm enjoying myself. I enjoy this town and I live in Western Hills and I'll always stay in Western Hills, way from this town a little bit. Seven days a week, you know, ten, twelve hours a day.
What you do the other day?
What I do the other day? I haven't found a day that doesn't end in Hawaii yet, so I'm in trouble. I like to share things with everybody, like there's, there's great things you can do down here. That's why I mean, you guys are all sitting there and taking interest in the merchants and ask for their opinion. They're here every day plugging this town, all plugging this town. Thing that goes on down here. Ask us, create ideas down here.
It's funny, it's funny that you mentioned the ark, because I ran into some people today. They were on their way home. Um, I can't remember where they lived, but they were coming by here because they were at the ark. And that was just today.
The racetrack, ski slopes, we got a lot, we got an awful lot going for us here.
Right in this tri-state area, we have a lot going on right here.
So, yeah, I'm, I just, uh, want to talk about the plan and it sounds good to me and we can meet on this stuff. We got a timetable, I think, and you guys are putting together a list. Okay.
Yep.
The one, the, the one big thing I'd like you to think about, and I don't know, uh, if Carl or Olin knows the rules, but if, if we can approach the problems with the corner building that Stroms in, on the utilities, is, is there anything that we need to do while we're in ownership that would affect the development of the burnout lot that we could fix now?
I think the air conditioning.
Air.
We moved the roof, right?
Well, that, that's the kind of stuff I want to look at when we're talking about this.
There's, there's a number of, uh, services along that wall and, and the disconnects along that wall and those AC units that need new. We also probably need to talk about moving the overhead service to it, because as long as the service crosses the property like that.
That's, that's what I mean. I mean, we got a pretty nice piece of property next to it, so let's get it ready while we're doing that.
Right.
Fire, firewall protection and, and what space?
Yeah.
Needs to be required between the two buildings or adding fire protection to, to building, in existing buildings? So there are, there are.
Well, there's things that have to be thought out, because if a building gets built there, you need a builder to have access to the back of the building for deliveries and that has to be to a certain spec. If transformers get put in there, there has to be escapeways between transformers and other hardened walls. Um, there's just, there's just things that have to be thought about in terms of what, what amount of that property can be built on and what that would look like, while protecting the integrity and the accessibility of the others.
We're trying to figure out what that square, put a rated for that square property. Move all those meters and, you know, seven-hour inspection on each wall, or do you leave them there and leave the five-foot escape on the, you know, out of, they didn't make it.
I, I think we're, we're.
I, I think we're, we're the ones that need to make that decision.
I agree. Okay, we got a plan?
All I want, thank you.
All right. Anything else? I'm taking a motion to adjourn.
That move.
Second. Okay?
I'll second it. All right.
Thanks, everybody.